We have an idea, a vision, hints, and time to work. However, only you can see in perfect detail the end of every beginning, every project, every season, every life. Nothing is ever in vain, for every mistake and missteps are used for good. Your righteousness transcends all of our efforts and understandings. Forgive us for our pride, the pride that pops up and the pride that threatens to unqualify us. Strengthen our confidence in you, in you who have made us to be, set us free from comparison in order to work together efficiently. Bless this meeting today, all those present, as well as the lives of those we will encounter afterward, ready us to make every movement count. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Would everyone with National Adoption Month please come forward? Come hang out with us up here at the front? Stand right here. All right, as I read this proclamation, get that right, Mr. Hebert. All children deserve a safe home and a family to help them flourish and grow. Each year, many Texas children find a forever home thanks to adoptive families. In Tom Green County, there are still many children currently in foster care awaiting a forever family to bring them home. During the month of November, communities across the country come together to observe National Adoption Month to encourage and celebrate adoption. This effort, along with similar celebrations in all 50 states, will offer children the chance to live with stable, loving families and encourage other dedicated individuals to make a powerful difference in the lives of children through adoption. The City of San Angelo recognizes National Adoption Month in support of the adopted families here in our community and encourages others to open their hearts and homes to children in the need of forever families. Therefore, I, Tom Thompson, Mayor, City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim November 2025 as National Adoption Month and call on all citizens to remember the children and families who have joined their lives through the miracle of adoption, open their hearts and minds to the idea of opening their own homes to children in need, and congratulate the new families to be formed during National Adoption Month. Somebody needs to come up and speak. Let us hear some words.
Good morning. My name is Sylvia Moreen, and I'm the Program Director for CPS. And I just want to say that we thank our community. Without you, we are not able to, you know, secure placement and permanency for our children. The need continues, though, and we really need for our community to come together and find more forever homes for our children, for our teenagers, for our babies, all those that we need. That way, they can stay in their community. We need them to not only adopt, but foster and foster children that are here so that they can stay within their community, their schools, their churches, with their friends and, you know, close families that they may not be able to be placed with, but they can live with. And with all that, you know, that can bring a lot of happiness during a child's trauma. You know, we can't reduce the trauma, but we certainly can minimize it as much as possible. And without the community and you, every single one of you involved, that's not possible. So, we do thank you for your efforts that continue, and we just ask for that, for that to continue through our, you know, through our city, through our counties, and that you continue to pray for our staff. It's a hard job for our families that take in our children and those, every piece that is involved in the permanency for our children. Thank you.
As we move to this next proclamation, we need anybody that's a veteran to come up to the front. Harry? Daniel? No skipping. The City of San Angelo is extremely pleased and honored to pay tribute to our distinguished veterans of the Armed Forces and active-duty Reserve and National Guard personnel of the United States of America for their service and sacrifice to our great nation. These brave men and women in military uniforms serve our nation with honor, distinction, and dedication in war, international conflicts, and during times of peace. Our nation's well-being, prosperity, and sense of peace is largely due to the sacrifices made by our women and men in the military. The courageous veterans in our community have earned our everlasting gratitude for serving our nation with devotion and love of country. During their service and afterwards, veterans and active-duty personnel contribute to the San Angelo community, Texas, and our nation by offering their skills, education, leadership, maturity, dedication learned in Armed Forces. Furthermore, let us also honor the families of armed service members missing in action that continue to endure the uncertainty of the fate of their loved ones that are unaccounted for. Finally, may we praise the families of all those who have served quietly with little recognition for their undying commitment to and support of their veterans. In celebration of this day, as we proudly wave our flags, watch holiday parades, and sing patriotic songs, let us stop for a moment to remember the sacrifices that our women and men in uniform have made for us so that we can enjoy the privileges and freedoms of our great nation. Therefore, I, Tom Thompson, Mayor, City of San Angelo, Texas, in accordance with an act of Congress dated June 1, 1954, do recognize November 11, 2025, as Veterans' Day in San Angelo. Further, be it known that the citizens of San Angelo, Texas, remember with eternal respect the service and sacrifices of all our former and current active-duty personnel of the Armed Forces of the United States of America. Come share some water.
Eleventh hour of the eleventh month, or eleventh hour of the eleventh day of the eleventh month marked the end of that great war, the war to end all wars. Unfortunately, it didn't hold true, and here we are today, still requiring the service of our military to defend our great nation. We appreciate the proclamation and the welcome we always receive from the City of San Angelo. We'll see you at the Veterans' Day Parade this Saturday, hopefully, and we look forward to just celebrating the 11th along with you.
We'll now move into public comment. Members of the public may raise issues or concerns not listed on the regular agenda during this time. To participate, please sign in with the city clerk prior to the beginning of the meeting. Speakers will be called in order they signed in. When speaking, citizens must speak from the podium, address all comments to the dais, begin by stating your name and address or single-member district, and limit their remarks to three minutes or less. Heather, do we have any public comment?
Morning, Mayor, council members, city staff, and community members. I'm Mike Burnett, Executive Director of Concho Valley Community Action Agency and Chair of the Concho Valley Homeless Planning Coalition. I reside in District One. I'm here today to talk in recognition of Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. This year, it is November 16 through 23. It is observed nationwide to shine a light on the struggles faced by our most vulnerable neighbors. This is Homeless Coalition in partnership with CBCAA and the Concho Valley Regional Food Bank sponsoring this this year. This week is more than symbolic, it's a call to action. In the Concho Valley, we know the numbers, 173 individuals were counted as homeless in our most recent point-in-time count. We estimate the real number is closer to 350 on any given night, including over 100 chronically homeless individuals. With over 12,000 residents in Tom Green County that are food insecure, and then you add in the delay in government funding for SNAP benefits, food insecurity is a real issue that we are facing. This year, we're hosting three events to engage the public and honor those impacted. First, on Monday, the 17th, in the evening, we have the Long Walk Home Homeless Vigil. This is a candlelight vigil on the steps of City Hall to remember those we have lost to homelessness. On November 18, Tuesday, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., we have our monthly Homeless Navigation Day at First Presbyterian. This is a hands-on outreach event where over 30 agencies come together to provide real-time services, ID recovery, health care, housing support, and more to over 150 individuals each month. On Wednesday, the 19th, at St. Paul Presbyterian Church in the morning, we have our annual Homeless Symposium where we have a community dialogue featuring lived experiences, collaborative problem-solving, and a shared vision for change. These events are not isolated, they're part of a larger movement for community awareness and action. If you remember, in June, we had the proclamation for the Rock Rose Community Campus, which we are still working for and moving towards. This is a partnership between the City of San Angelo, the Homeless Coalition, and many agencies and individuals to build a regional hub for coordinated homelessness and poverty relief services. Rock Rose will transform the services that we offer in our region into a daily, permanent operation, offering shelter, case management, health care, job training, and more. Rock Rose is not just a building, it is a promise, a promise that poverty is unacceptable and that dignity, opportunity, and community are the foundation of our response. We estimate over 12,000 people annually being served at Rock Rose. Finally, one more date to be aware of is January 22, which is our point-in-time count for Tom Green County. So as we enter this time of Hunger and Homelessness Week, I want to thank you for your time, your partnership, and your commitment to a stronger, more compassionate San Angelo and the Concho Valley. Thank you.
Heather, next, public comment?
Jamal Shumpert, SMD III. Good morning, Council, Mayor. I've watched y'all talk about Twin Mountain probably three, four years now, and I kind of figured out what the issue is from the last conversation. I wouldn't want us to use our tax money to put pipes out there. I also wouldn't want us to use our tax money for expansion and putting pipes for businesses and these property owners, well, not property owners, these developers who's held on to this land for so long. In fact, you would think that Spurs Development, by giving them our tax money, actually deters development. That's why they've been waiting, so that they can get that tranche of money, and we put that pipe out there using our tax money, so they could put those homes out there and make a lot of money. I'm not against them making a lot of money, but I am against them using our tax money for that expansion, for that very reason. Having some of your directors come up here and ask certain different boards for money for pipes for businesses, I just think we're getting too deep into the weeds with incentives, giving out so much money. We're not supporting businesses. I think we're actually doing the business ourselves. I don't know how to explain it, but the infield development program I looked over it over the past few years, it doesn't work as it was explained. We're supposed to be filling in a lot of lots within the town. Some of that goes into new development on the outskirts of town. There are quite a bit of things. We should take a look at. And, I mean, there's comments further on your agenda I have to speak on, but I'd rather speak on them right now, like the comprehensive update. That's a great thing, great thing, but when you include the capital improvement plan, which has what I would like to call y'all's projects, not necessarily the city's projects, then you take what's needed, like the deferred maintenance on all our pipes in the city, and you go put a pipe out at Twin Mountain when you could've spent that money on buying vacuum trucks to blow out some of the sewer pipes, because it stinks so much around town. There are, I would love to talk to at least one or two of you guys about certain staffs, certain priorities that are really, really sinking this town. And the last thing I wanted to say is, $49 to $52 million in the undersigned fund balance, and we couldn't pay $62,000 for these 65 and older? That I kind of do have a problem with. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamal. Heather, any more public comment?
That's all.
With the conclusion of public comment, we'll move into the consent agenda. As we move down the desk, we'll go through, I'll start on this side of the dais. Mary, is anything you'd like to pull?
No, sir.
Heather? Um, excuse me, Karen? Sorry. Missed it.
We have new council.
New council person.
New person.
Karen, Patrick?
None.
I have nothing to pull. Harry?
Nothing.
Mr. Self? Mr. Hebert?
No, sir.
With no items to pull, could I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a first from Tommy Hebert, a second from Harry Thomas. Do I have any public comment on the consent agenda? With them, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? When none opposed, all consent agenda items pass 7-0. We'll move into the regular agenda. Comments regarding items on the regular agenda may be made by the public when each item is discussed or outlined above. To participate, please sign in with city clerk prior to the beginning of the meeting. Speakers will be called in order they signed in. Comments are limited to less than three minutes. Applicants, proponents, and appellants are exempt from the time limit above and instead must limit their remarks to less than five minutes. With that, we'll move into Item A. Consider accepting or rejecting the high-seal bids for three lots that were struck off the city from July 1, 2025 tax sale, and if, and if accepted, authorizing the mayor to execute a quitclaim deed on behalf of the city. Item 1, 209 West Ninth. Item 2, 506 North Browning Street. Item 3, 2001 West Twentieth. Presentation made by real estate manager Sarah Tackett.
Good morning, Daniel, Mayor, Council. I'm bringing three lots that were recently struck off during the last tax sale to the city. We are the trustee for the three taxing entities within the city. This table, I kind of put a little bit of information for each of the three lots, and as I show you a picture of the property, I'll reference this and kind of give you those values again so you can associate them with the picture. So these are the three lots. I did list the appraised value as of today. The minimum bid at the tax sale and how they come up with that bid is they take all the back taxes, all the legal fees that are associated at that time. They don't take into consideration any other liens, such as code enforcement liens with the property. And I did put on this table the liens, the approximate total amount due, because that does include the taxes, the liens, and any legal fees associated with the resale of that property. And then I did list the highest bid that was received. I will note on 209 West Ninth, we only received one bid. On 506 Browning, we received one. We did receive another one that was late, but so we couldn't count it. And then on the last property, 201 West Twentieth, we did receive three bids, and that is the highest bid we received. So this is 209 West Ninth. It is a vacant lot. It's 5,000 square feet. It's valued at $14,000, and the highest bid we received was $5,600. Any questions on that one?
No, let's move to the next one.
All right. 506 North Browning. This house is on the dangerous building list. It is boarded. As you see, the appraisal district has it valued at $97,000, and the highest bid we received was $7,500. And the last one is 201 West Twentieth. This house is not on the dangerous building list, however, it has been partially boarded. The house is totally open. Somebody has removed, excuse me, all the boards from the doors and the windows, and the roof is kind of caving in in the back.
So it should be on that list?
More than likely, yes. The highest bid on that one was $20,050. I just put this slide, just some things as we're considering accepting or rejecting the bids and putting it back out, is there is, you know, maintenance of the properties, getting this property back on the tax roll, the debt associated with the properties, the liens, the taxes, the legal fees, and hopefully the potential improvement of the properties once we deed it to the new owner. That's just kind of all the things we look at. So I did do, my recommendation was to accept the bid on 209 West Ninth, reject the bid on Browning, because the bid that came in late was about three times as much as the bid that we received timely. And then I did say to accept the bid on Twentieth Street.
All right, so we'll open this up to questions from the dais. I believe Harry spoke up first, so Harry?
Sarah, on these, when we sell these houses, the bids we get on these, do we require the purchaser to clean up the property or get it back on the tax rolls or do whatever we need to do so that it's, it's not an eyesore in the neighborhood and the fire marshal doesn't have to come back again? I mean, are there stipulations on those?
Well, once it's, we do the deed to them, they would have to be meeting city code. I mean, code enforcement would be inspecting the property, especially the property that's on the dangerous building list. They would have to remedy that, either do the repairs or demolish that property.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Patrick?
On the, since we're the trustee, how does the bids we get, how does it get broken down as far as the liens that are already there, the different tax entities?
So, there's a property analysis form that, depending on the bid, the city automatically gets $500 minimum. We get that. And depending on the bid, there's percentages. We have to pay the taxes and the legal fees first, and if there's additional funds, then the liens will be paid. If not, we will have to write those liens off. So it's percentages of that bid.
So on these, most likely, it's going to be, we'll get our 500, and then by the time you pay the legal fees, most of them are, that's going to be pretty much a wash?
Yes.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. But, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Tommy?
Question, on the one you're suggesting that we reject, Sarah, 506 North Browning, since the bid was three times higher that was received late, how does that process work? Do we go back to them? Do we have to go through the whole process of re-advertising, rebidding, et cetera?
We would rebid it, and we just, we put a for-sale sign in, you know, on the property, and we put, excuse me, and we put it on the city's website. And we usually rebid, we bid it for about three weeks.
And hopefully, the same folks would bid again, but do it on time, in time, to be able to accept that bid?
I would think with their bid, they were highly interested in it, so I think they would definitely rebid.
Do we consider what it costs us to demolish? If we have to end up demolishing one of those, is that something that we are ever able to recoup or likely no?
If we, at this point, had to demolish it, it would be at our cost.
Yeah.
So it's, it's very pricey. I mean, a house is, I mean, I've seen, I can't say exactly, but demolition liens vary from $5,000 to $20,000, depending on the size of the house.
And normally, when we demo a property that's not ours, we can put a lien on it, but technically, it's ours right now, so we can't lien our own property and then make it subject to whoever buys it, so.
Have any other questions? Sarah, I will say, just the consensus of the group here is, we like staff recommendations. My question is, when you go out and place these on bid, do we, do we post all the fees, the back taxes, everything that's pending upon it? Do we post all the liens against it when they bid?
We don't, and we just haven't in the past. I don't know, we, I guess we could, I can get with Brendan on that. We've never listed a minimum bid, and we can definitely start doing that.
Yeah, I don't see any reason why we can't.
We just haven't in the past, and so I think it would be a good idea.
No, I think in the path of transparency, you know, our citizens would like to see how much we've literally got tied and backed up, and as some people just say, well, you just need to sell that and let it go, they really don't know how much is back and owed until that property actually sells and somebody swaps it on lien, so.
I think, just, you know, speaking with some of the people that bid on all of the properties, maybe the bids are so low because they're taking into consideration that, especially on like Twentieth Street, more than likely that property's going to be demolished, and also on Ninth Street, I would think that if it's a developer, he is probably going to demolish, and that is very costly. So, but we can definitely move forward with putting a minimum bid.
Oh, and I think it's obvious looking at this, two of these are total wipeouts and restart over, so there's, it's not a money-making part on that.
Right.
When you take that step, but I think it'd be nice if when we posted these from now on, we at least posted all the liens on it, just for the citizens to know what we've already got as baggage moving forward.
Sure, we can do that.
Cool, thank you very much. With that, I'll look for a motion.
I'll make a motion. We accept staff recommendation of accepting the bid on 209 West Ninth and the, accepting the bid on 201 West Twentieth and then rejecting the bid on 506 North Browning.
And a second from Harry Thomas. We got any public comment? With no public comment, we'll look for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? When then, Item A passes 7-0.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Sarah. We'll move on to Item B. Consider authorizing staff to issue an RFQ for revisions and updates of the City of San Angelo Comprehensive Plan. Presentation made by Planning and Development Services, Erin Vanoy.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, Mr. Valenzuela. It's a great pleasure today to talk about a request for qualifications for our comprehensive plan. That means our community is getting to, begin to embark on a great journey to help our community, to look at our last 20 years and to look forward the next 20 years to see what our community can become. So with that, I've just got a little bit of background, and really today, I want to find out your views of what we should be putting into the request for qualifications when we send this out to companies to help us build that plan. As always, I like to start with, what is our, our city's vision statement and mission statement? And all of you guys know this, but I say this for our community, to be, our city wants to be the Texas standard for opportunity, prosperity, and quality of life. And our mission statement for our employees and what we do on a day-to-day basis is to deliver excellence in services through the best management practices, a dedicated, caring, and productive workforce, innovative solutions, and a strong commitment to fiscal responsibility. And you see all those key words in there, and those key words should translate into our comprehensive plan. And as all of us know in this room and in our community, fiscal responsibility is very, very important on how we lead our city. So why a comprehensive plan update? Our major plan is from 2003. We've had some minor updates in 2006 and 2009, and if you notice, and you guys hear about this a lot, our zoning ordinance is from 2000. And so even in 2003, we may have done step one, we may have done step one and, one A and one B in 2006 and 2009, but we really never took step two and looked back at our zoning ordinance and our land development ordinance that's from the 90s. And I want to encourage you and keep that in the back of your mind, that the comprehensive plan is really step one or phase one. We've got to go all the way through to getting our zoning ordinance and our land development and subdivision ordinance updated after that process. We do have housing studies from 2019 and 2025 that need to be incorporated into our long-term plans, and we know, everyone in the room knows, economic development is critical for the success of San Angelo. However we lead our economic development, how we recruit businesses, how we make properties available, how we look at our land use- available, how we look at our land use tables to allow things to happen is just critical. And we all know, infrastructure, public facilities, need to be congruent with the capital improvement program. And that's not the plan, but that's really the program, that's the principles behind the plan. Where, where does the plan pointing to? And that's, that's why we need that in our comprehensive plan update. But here's just kind of the breakdown of what the comprehensive plan, it is the plan that leads all of our other plans for our community. It's the community vision, it's the future thoroughfare plan, where are we gonna make connectivities to these new properties? It's the future development plan, how are we going to grow? How are we going to do infill? And our policy program, what are our policies that's leading our, our city council, that's leading our city boards, are leading our city staff to say, this is where we're headed? Those policy plans then come back into our strategic plan, our technical plans, our corridor plans, and our special area plans. So think of neighborhood plans, or the cultural district, or things like that, those special area plans that help things continue to grow, revitalize, and continue to help our community. And then what are the implementation tools? The biggest implementation tool is, what does our city budget allow us to do? What does our municipal codes say our development community needs to do? Capital improvements, how do we spend money in the future? Is it facing our comprehensive plan? Is it within those principles? And what is our zoning ordinance that allows things to grow, still protects our historical properties, our historical neighborhoods, but still allows us to grow, do infill things, and keep the heritage of San Angelo, Texas? So I think those are very important things. So what is the comprehensive update? It is a guiding, non-regulatory document focused on land use, transportation, community character, parks and recreation, and more. So all the way from how we regulate things to what is our quality of life. It is a vision for growth and development at our community scale, created by the community and for the community to record, to shared goals and desires for themselves and their fellow residents. So what does our community want? What are they telling us, we, where we want to go in the next twenty years? Examining, what is our community today? What is our baseline today? Where are we at? What are we spending today, and what are we spending it on? Where we came from, crafts the coordinated roadmap for the next ten to twenty years. It analyzes the community both quantitatively and qualitatively, so not just the numbers, but also what is our quality of our community. It sets the context for public and private development and protection of others, again, neighborhoods to industry, how do we have those separations? How do we have those areas that are mixed use? How do we do those things? And again, the comprehensive plan may assist us with future funding with, here's where we need to have our targeted grant programs, looking at these types of grants that focus back on our comprehensive plan, that's part of our capital improvement program. Again, at the very top is just our, you know, what is the vision for San Angelo's future? What are those guiding principles that we're gonna bring in for San Angelo? What are our goals as a community? How do those goals translate into policies that work down into the, into our city folks that are working these programs? And then what are our implementation strategy? What is our action plan after this comprehensive plan comes to us? What do we do in the short term? What do we do in the long term? What is that ten-year playbook, if you will, that says, here's the steps you need to take to get to this level if that's where your community's headed? So what are the topics that are typical in a comprehensive plan? Again, we go back to that baseline, what are our demographics and existing conditions? We need to look at land use and economic development, those go hand-in-hand, transportation and infrastructure. If we don't have the roads, water, sewer, and capacity to increase those based on our economic development plan and land use, we have to get those congruent. We have to make those things happen together. What is our community character in housing and our recreation and natural environment? As we all believe and know, our community has a beautiful river that runs through it, we have a recreational lake at Lake Nazworthy, we, there's Twin Buttes, that's a beautiful fishing lake. We have a wonderful natural environment that we need to continue to enhance with our comprehensive plan to continue to draw people to our community, whether those are visitors, whether those are people that stay, things like that. The other things we need to mention in here is our partnerships with Goodfellow Air Force Base, extremely critical for our community. We need that within our comprehensive plan. Our partnerships with Angelo State University, our partnerships with the school districts, whether they're public, private, charter, all of those dynamics are changing, and we need to make sure that we're accommodating and looking forward to help them grow as well as what are the options for the city to, to help things mature around those schools, that they don't have to continue to consolidate and things like that. So these are the things that are typical in a comprehensive plan. So, as you guys know, the city council's strategic priorities are infrastructure, public safety, economic development, and workforce. And each of those have some sub, subcategories underneath them, but those are the four main focuses that our budget is driven by, that your decisions are driven by. And so how do we incorporate these into our comprehensive plan? And it's that capital improvement program policies, how do we set up the policies, not necessarily the plan, that will come secondarily, but the policies that drive that plan. Economic development priorities, what are our priorities with economic development? How do we go recruit? What types of industries are we wanting? How does the housing come into that? Fiscal stewardship, I don't think any of us can speak about that enough of, we know we'll have some wins and we know we have, we'll have some losses, but we need to balance those out and look at those, and staff has to bring you data so you can make the best decision fiscally for our community. Long-term planning for appropriate growth patterns, again, in the comprehensive plan, why live and work in San Angelo? What is the quality of life in San Angelo, parks, trails, connectivity to amenities? How are we making those things happen with our policies, within our secondary plans, and then our action steps that take it forward? So here are the things that I, that we have worked with, talking with a lot of different staff partners, community people, and here's what we're coming forward with to ask to be put in the request for qualifications out to the public to see who wants to come and help us with our comprehensive plan. Again, that baseline, current demographics and conditions of San Angelo, the future land use and growth framework, livable neighborhoods within the Costa DC Housing Study, mobility, infrastructure, and resilience frameworks. And that resilient framework is about fiscal responsibility. Parks, open spaces, and trails with regional view for stormwater, public facilities and schools, how do we partner those three things together as we look at areas that we grow? And so those probably partner with some parks aspects, that we're able to do those things. So how do we partner those things together that we're not dotting around and not making a, a comprehensive decision? Economic development and catalyst opportunities. And then resilient communities, that we have a grant that we have submitted to the Texas Land Board, it's a GLO Resilient Communities Grant that will come in, that will help us put together in our comprehensive plan some disaster, economic, and infrastructure items that look at resiliency. What are our redundant things? If our water line is, is damaged in some major way, how do we fix that? If we have a major disaster like we had previous, how do we have in our comprehensive plan that we're going to mitigate some of those things in the future? And same with economics, that if we have an economic challenge, that's a big thing for our community. How are we going to be resilient against that if, if the tax dollars are not coming in, yet we have so many miles of roads that we have to maintain? What are we doing to look at that, to say, all right, what are we doing for our costs today? The results would be an implementation strategy and an action framework. Out of this comprehensive plan, we're gonna get our baseline, we're gonna get our land use and these economic development items, and then we're gonna have an action framework that comes back and says, all right, City of San Angelo, here are your next steps to keep this process going, to keep you headed towards the goal. So with that, Mayor, I turn it to you and to the council to answer any questions for this, for, for the request for qualifications for our comprehensive plan.
Erin, I want to say thank you for bringing this forward. I think this is an item that several of us had discussed for many years up here on the dais, and we're glad to see it move forward. We think anytime something's sent latent for fifteen, twenty years, we've maybe avoided some spots and had some, maybe headwinds while we didn't bring this forward, but we brought it forward now. And I think we need to stay on top of it. And the decisions made with this program will be felt fifteen, twenty years in the future. We just have to make sure we got the right plan. And when you look at something like this, you can put a lot of stuff on paper, but the key to this is gonna be execution.
Yes, sir.
And not to drag our feet. So with that, I'll open up the dais, any questions?
Comments?
Comments? Questions? You're up, Tommy.
Erin, thank you. The first time I heard this mentioned was at least two years ago during Harry's campaign. Harry brought up the, the fact that he thought we needed to update our comprehensive plan. And it goes back further than that, too, but that was when it was, I'll say, gained some legs, so thank you, Harry. Couple of things that I like that, that you have, you have said would be covered. Number one is the financial stewardship. A couple of us were, were privileged to see a presentation, it's been at least a year ago, or at least last year, about what financial stewardship could look like if we were to use that as an analytical tool. And it was amazing what, what we were presented at, at this workshop. I like that aspect being incorporated into it. Then you said something else about data. To me, we have, that is one thing that has been lacking, in my opinion, in some of the plans we have now, is lack of data that can help us make decisions. So hopefully this would be heavily laden with data to help us make good decisions. So Erin, I applaud you for pursuing this, for bringing this forward, for the, I'll say, no pun intended, but for the comprehensive look that you have given to a comprehensive plan, so, so thank you.
Thank you.
Erin, I have a, one question, and I should, I should know the answer to this, but I don't. Pardon me. When was our last census done? You know, the, the national census? And it's like every ten years, and would that, I remember filling those out, and it was a lot more than just saying how many people were in your household. How close to that next census that's sent out? How close are we to that? And will that, could that play a role in, like, what Tommy was saying, the data and all, to, how that could influence that?
Yes, well, our census is every ten years, twenty twenty, twenty thirty. They do do some updates in between, that they're looking at things, as well as some of our other plans, like our most recent plan of the housing study, did a lot of data research on our community. What does our community look like demographically? And so those things are always out there in the public for the folks to go and look at and really pull in, what do we look like today? And that's what this company will do, is what do we look like today from a financial standpoint, from a people's standpoint, from a distribution of, of those within our community? And so we envision a lot of data coming back from that and showing maybe some, some mapping that shows where we have infrastructure that may not be up to standards, and then what does the housing look like around that area? Or maybe it's in our industrial area, and how far away does, how long does it take for an, a person to drive to their job? Those types of things, that we'll have some data that's based on our real data today in two thousand and twenty-five and two thousand and twenty-six, when this actually kicks off, they'll be looking at those data streams that are out there.
Bill, when you say a company, have we already notated who, who that is, or we're gonna send that out?
We have not. This is the process to make sure that we're sending out the right qualifications, then companies will say, hey, we have the right qualifications, we'll have a team that will evaluate those, then we'll do some interviews, and then we'll get a contract moving forward. Y'all will see the contract sometime after the first of the year.
I, I know you were talking about the other, besides Goodfellow, ASU, of course, Howard College, all of that plays a role in it. There's been a lot of emphasis on the state parks, and they've kind of got the Texas Parks and Wildlife, they've put a, seems like they're, they're really on the high roll to, with awareness and utilizing our state park. Is there any grant opportunities that we could marry those with what the state park is doing and with the city? Is there an opportunity for, for those to work in tandem or essentially marry those together?
I can give you the short answer, Rick may give you a better answer than, but the short answer is yes. And within this plan, we are writing, because the Texas Parks and Wildlife requires some specific language within the comprehensive plan that allows us to leverage some grant requests to their organization to help us with our parks as well. And Rick, is there anything else to add to that?
That's correct. Basically, we have to do some updates every so often to be eligible for those grant opportunities. So Carl usually does that, we're, I think, a few years out from that update, but in this case, it would be a great opportunity to just do that update, just keeps us current, so yes.
I'll tell you what, just as a citizen of San Angelo, I am very impressed and grateful and thankful that we have so much up-to-date data that we can put together, and you with your, what you've done with our maps and stuff is just, nothing short of incredible. But to have those resources available to us, it's like we do have real-time data, and it's not a small feat to put all that together, but it is certainly reassuring to know that we have it and that we, our staff does have the knowledge then to access that and, and put it into play. So I'm, of course, I'm grateful to you as a councilwoman, but I'm extremely grateful to you as a citizen. So thank you, Erin, for, for your work and for your staff, we appreciate it.
The thanks really goes to the, there's a big team with our GIS team and our, and our IT team, they're the ones that do that behind-the-scenes work, and folks out in the field that go and collect, collect data all the time. And so I'm glad we have the emphasis on data collection, and now we need to put the data to work for us.
You're the right man for it. Thank you, Erin.
I, I think those listening and those in attendance might be curious how the public is engaged in this process. I think that's the only thing that we haven't discussed. Other than that, there, there is indeed, as Tommy and Harry and Tom have mentioned, a group of us that have been hoping for this, asking for this for a number of years, and we are delighted to see it come before us. Thank you so much.
Yes, public engagement will be critical in this process, and so that's one of the key things that we're looking for with the partnership with who the company is that comes in to help us. It will be public meetings, it'll be discussions, and we will also work with our communications team here with the City of San Angelo to help get things on websites, do things on social media, getting that information out. And our staff team will also be key in getting out to the farmer's market and talking about the comprehensive plan, and getting out to different events all over town during this next twelve to eighteen months, so that the community is engaged, they have, we get their input, they understand what's going on. Because that would be a terrible idea to not do that and then come up to you guys at some point and say, here we have this plan, but we haven't engaged with the community. Because this really is a community plan. So thank you for that question.
Good morning, Erin. On this, on the plan, you know, it talks about the future land use and growth framework. If we had data centers, major manufacturers, something like that, come in and kind of change the landscape of San Angelo in the next five to ten years, would it require another comprehensive plan to kind of go from there? I mean, is this something that probably needs to be done a lot more than it has been in the past?
I would say it does not need another comprehensive plan. What it needs to be is our comprehensive plan needs to be ever-evolving. And so we need to be looking at that plan often, whether that's a seven or ten-year timeframe. I would say currently, we're going to be looking at those things because we know we have some of that potential in what our state, what's happening in our state. So we need to be identifying those areas now, because that's really us trying to look into the future and say, we believe these type of industries fit with our culture, fit within our community, and here's the locations in our community that make the most sense.
And so that'll already include some of that, the potential of the future land use.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I thought you was gonna go left to right, so Joe and I were already ready.
I'm gonna echo what's been said. Thank you, Erin, I think this is a giant step forward for the citizens of San Angelo, and I think for those people that are gonna be here in fifteen or twenty years, it's gonna be key for the, the success of the, the city and the citizens. So I want to say thanks. You need to touch on one item that I'm gonna bring up, because I think this council, Tommy and I should probably be here for that, will talk about what do we do for services when you don't have the amount of tax coming in? And we already know that the state legislature is gonna be looking at capping property tax, so we'll be looking, maybe with this, this study, but also at this, the people on this dais, to make sure that we're ahead of the curve on this, so we know what we can, we to make sure that we're ahead of the curve on this, so we know what we can keep and what we might have to give up on services if we lose tax revenue. So thanks again. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. A little bit. I don't want everybody to get all, I sat on Planning Commission, and that's a big deal, is the things we saw coming before us were, can I do this here? And so I remember you explaining these studies that we've done in the past, and it's very interesting that way. It kind of helps our city plan itself. My question was, is it going to restrict somebody from doing something? But you kind of answered it with Patrick. As long as the plan's evolving, that's the main thing. And so that way, we can grow, because you may have a residential area pop up that you weren't planning in an area. So again, that's all I had, really, is I think it's a good deal, we need to do it, because we went over some of those past studies in the Planning Commission, and it really helps make good, sound decisions on that part. So thank you.
And again, I just, this is not a regulatory document. It's really just a guidance document with our policies, and then that next level of zoning ordinance and our codes that probably need to be changed over time to make sure that they're helping with development to come in, moving things forward. And Mayor, I'll just say, thank you to Mr. Valenzuela for fighting for this in the budget process. Thank you to the budget team for working, and thank you guys for being forward-thinking this last year in the budget process, saying this is important. So really, the thanks goes back to you guys up here on the dais.
Well, and with that, Erin, I want to tee you up. You know, Daniel, Daniel, if you want to make some comments, I mean, you've been key on this one, bringing it forward, so I'd like to hear some comments from you, too.
The comprehensive plan is a powerful tool, and it's got to be something that, quite frankly, it does adjust, it's ever-changing. But it's a good guidance for any city. And what we've done, I know that back in 2030 was the time that we actually did the comprehensive plan, and some, a couple of adjustments since then. But it can't be stated strongly enough that really it is a powerful tool for what is coming for our community in order for us to do it. The planning phase itself, it has to be in place. We have to have a little bit of direction moving forward and knowing what we want in our community. And it's a great question that Mayor just asked a while ago, stakeholders, it's not just the citizens, it's all the stakeholders in our community that'll be involved in the whole process. You'll have from Goodfellow Air Force Base, to our colleges, to our schools. It's going to be something, in order for it to be truly impactful, we have to make sure that there is true involvement by all the different stakeholders in our community. This is a great step forward, and I'm quite excited that this is happening, and I'm looking forward to great things. I know this is my last year, but I am thrilled that it is happening this year and moving forward. So again, I just wanted to thank Erin for a lot of the great work, Rick, that they have, a lot of thought they put into this as well, council members, your diligence as well. It's not only been something that's been talked about for a few years, it's been something that's been drilled in conversations that I've had with Tommy and Harry and Tom and Karen, my goodness. So again, this is just something that, quite frankly, we're pretty thrilled about, and we're excited about moving forward with it.
Daniel, to summarize, I'll just say, there's probably no more single, independently significant item that'll come forth to council than this, steering our direction for the future.
Absolutely.
With that, I'll go ahead and step up. As a consensus from the here-on-the-road, I'll make a motion to approve for the RFQ. Can I get a second? I got a second from Joe Self. Is there any public comment, Heather?
Everybody's seconded.
Everybody's seconded. We'll just, I'll, with that, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item B passes 7-0. We'll move into item C. Consider the following items regarding meet and confer. Number one, the approval of an agreement with San Angelo Police Officers Association Coalition, establishing certain terms and conditions of employment for covered police officers to be effective October 1, 2025 through September 30, 2026, and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents. And number two, first reading and public hearing of an ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2025 and ending September 30, 2026, for police department pay plan and staffing levels. Presentation made by Human Resource Director Veronica Sanchez, SAOPOC President Noel Anderson, and Finance Director Tina Dersky.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. Thank you very much. Veronica Sanchez, HR Director. What we bring forward to you today is a tentative meet and confer agreement. As many of you know, the police association and the City of San Angelo participate in a negotiation process that, at the end, will develop a meet and confer agreement. So we've gone through that process. Your city negotiation team consists of Michael Dane, Assistant City Manager, Brandon Dyson, City Attorney, and Tina Dersky, Finance Director, and myself. And then Noel, if you want to go through your team?
Yes. My team consisted of myself, Vice President of Officers, Blue Flores, or Charles Flores, Vice President of Supervisors, John Bellini, Kelsey Hernandez, which is our auditor, Jeff Lake, which is our CLAPE representative, Lynn Dye, that's our treasurer.
So on the presentation, I have just a few, sorry, I turned the mic off, I apologize. A few bullet points for you. This agreement includes the 5% increase for police officers that City Council had previously approved in terms of increases. So they have agreed to utilize that entire amount to apply to their salaries. Inclusion of counting vacation leave, emergency leave, WOW days, United Way days as regular hours worked for the purpose of computing overtime. Development of sick leave payout structure that assists with retention and unnecessary use of sick leave. Inclusion of the appointment of two deputy chiefs. This will be achieved by converting to lieutenant positions. Flexibility for handling disciplinary suspensions not otherwise permitted under the code, for example, forfeiture of vacation time. Alternative disciplinary options by agreement requiring an officer to complete a program of counseling or rehabilitation. Upon agreement of the parties, the option to have disciplinary appeals decided by written briefs to save time and money. Contract dispute resolution procedures requiring individual officers to dispute, officers dispute to be vetted through the association before being filed with the city. Options for mediation and agreed arbitration. And provisions regarding confidentiality of records utilized in internal affair investigations. There, the agreement itself is quite lengthy. I did provide that tentative agreement in your background information. This agreement would be effective October 1 through September 30, so it will be aligned with our fiscal year. The current agreement doesn't expire until the end of December, so if this is approved, it would supersede the current agreement and be dated as of October 1. We are happy to go through any of the provisions in that agreement with you. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you, Veronica. I'll do the same thing. I'll get the mic on, and I'm sure we're going to have several questions on the dais, from the dais. Could you go back to your first slide? There are some things I need to get some clarity on, I believe, on, could you explain the United Way days and the WOW days? I've had several, I won't say several, I had a couple of questions on what that is exactly.
Currently, for the United Way days, if an employee contributes a certain amount of their hourly wage to United Way, City Council has approved that employees receive a day or two, depending on the amount of contributions that they give. As far as WOW days, that is tied to our wellness program, and so if you achieve certain things through the wellness program, Council has also approved that you get a day or two as well there. Those are paid leave days. So currently, that doesn't count towards regular hours worked, so if you take any of those days during the work week, the, those are deducted from that 40 hours. So you would not be eligible for overtime. In this agreement, those two types of leave would be counted towards hours worked. So it would not count against them for the purpose of overtime.
Okay. Thank you on that. We'll go ahead and start down here on this side of the dais, and then we'll move across. Tommy, have you got any questions?
Right now, I'm good.
Okay, Joe? Harry?
Noel, would you explain to me what the job responsibilities were for the two new positions that you've got listed here? Conversion to lieutenant positions to two deputy chiefs? I'm not sure that I understand what a deputy chief is.
That's probably best for the chief to provide that information.
Thank you for the question. So basically, we go back to 1999, we had more administrative staff inside the San Angelo Police Department to handle day-to-day business of the San Angelo Police Department. This would take two lieutenants and convert them to a deputy chief, which is equivalent to a major or a captain. It's right below the assistant chief, and it puts them in charge of operations, kind of like what you would see with the battalion chief inside the fire department, that they're operational-heavy, and it frees up the two assistant chiefs. Because, you know, used to, we had three assistant chiefs. This gives the ability for the two assistant chiefs to really handle administrative issues, work on grants, get the things that need to be done, instead of also having to put their focus on operations.
So deputy chief would be like captain in fire department, major in some other police departments, is that my understanding?
So you're seeing a trend across the state that it used to be captains, it's probably the closest thing, and captains are being converted to deputy chiefs because they are doing a heavier administrative load than like being responsible for like the whole division, that they're actually responsible for multiple divisions.
I just wanted citizens to have a better understanding.
Oh, absolutely.
That when I get a phone call and say, hey, we just promoted somebody to a deputy chief, I don't even know what that is, at least I'll be able to have enough knowledge to answer the question. So thank you.
Yes, sir. So it provides two assistant chiefs and two deputy chiefs. We saw, I can say Lubbock, and I believe a couple of cities I can't think of right now that are close by that have converted those captain positions to deputy chiefs.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Any further questions, Eric? Patrick, any questions?
Hey Travis, did we go too far? On, when you started that, you were talking about, used to, we had more administrative positions? Would that be civilian, or was that police?
It was police officers. We had two captains and two assistant chiefs.
Gotcha.
And then the chief. So this is, we're kind of going back to that, and we also had fewer officers at that timeframe as well.
So we still, it still needs to be somebody that knows role. It can't be just an administrative position. It needs to be somebody that knows the actual.
And when working through the Officers Association, which have been outstanding, it's been clear of who I want there and why I want them there, and so I put that out front. So that way, they know, hey, these are the right guys for the right place, and that's what I'm about.
With this, with this agreement, have you gotten a feel from your officers, or is everybody pretty happy with it?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I think that's why the agreement was, is because of who we're putting there. You know, it's an approach to say, hey, these are the right people that are, have a lot of knowledge in the areas of investigations and patrol operations, and so they'll be working heavily with those as the operation chief, if you will, over those things, day-to-day operations.
Sure. Thank you.
Yes, sir. And also, while I'm up here, I want to say, it's a weird spot for me to be as a chief, because I wasn't on the city board, and I wasn't on the association's side, so I've kind of just been in-between. I've been super impressed with Veronica and Noel, and everybody on their teams have done a great job this year, so I just want to say publicly, I appreciate them, and thank y'all.
Patrick, are you good? Karen?
I'm good, thank you.
Mary? Okay, Veronica, this is an area, and Chief, you may want to come back, I may need you on this. Sorry, get you a little exercise, get your steps in today. As a city, we have struggled with retaining and keeping police officers and pay and compensation. This is one of the things every August and September becomes something that we have to deal with to try to keep in. But are we getting in a better shape than where we were? I mean, is it easier to retain our employees and maintain our PD, our public safety? And where I'll go with that is like, since '23, we've done some compensation changes. We've got about 34% in increases in public safety, 32% in fire, 34% here. Is that getting us close to where we need to be? Because I hear that a lot, and there was some sacrifices and trades made in there to get there. Are we helping solve the problem?
So I think we're doing great inside the confines of what we're given as a city. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir.
So based on our income, if you will, from our tax base and where we're at, I think we're doing well. But when we compare that to Abilene, Wichita Falls, Temple, I mean, no, we're not near to that. Our biggest competitor we'll never be close to, which is DPS. We lose either candidates or current police officers to them. You know, Abilene is over $100,000 for their max pay, Midland, I'm sorry, Wichita Falls is over $100,000. So I mean, we have a ways to go, and I want to be clear with that, but based off the confines of where we are at as a city and where we are, I think we're doing a great job in that regards. So anything that we can push on, which would be the morale inside the department, making sure we're pushing towards force multipliers to provide a way to get the numbers up that we need. We're seeing recruiting and doing an outstanding job. We're seeing the academy trying to double up and get more people into the academy. So everything that we can push on was inside the confines of the arena that we've been given, we're doing a great job at. And I think the more we see wonderful cooperative approach on contracts like this, the better we're going to be, and more people will want to work for a place that gets along and is appropriate and is for the betterment of the employee outside of just compensation.
Well, we'd like to thank San Angelo, its quality of life is better than anybody else's. I mean, that's just what we hope and what we want to see. And as we go through, we make individual concessions for, I won't say concessions, but we try to keep all of our officers with a car. I mean, we'd love to see those in the neighborhood. Everybody, if I'm not wrong, everybody, all, most of the police have their own vehicle, correct?
Anybody probably over four years gets a police car, yes, sir.
Right. And it's great seeing those in the neighborhood. As we move forward, we just want to make sure we're staying on the same page, right? And those are some decisions that y'all's group and your discussions and negotiations, I mean, we froze some spots in choice of making pay increases. And we get that. And that was a decision made where we froze, what, four, five, six positions? Six positions.
Six.
All right. But that, I want to weigh that, because I hear a lot of comments, and you and I both talk about, we'll sit down inside of them and say, what do we need? Well, we need some headcount, you know, and we have to look, and we're going to have to weigh those balances. But it's your group that sits in there and negotiates and says, we're moving forward with salary and lieu of headcount. And from what I heard you just say, is you're going to try to bump the headcount some as we move forward?
Yes, sir. We're doing everything we can. We've hired more in the last 17 months than we have in a department for a very long time. We're going to continue to push on that. But I guess for a point of understanding, we're operating inside the confines of what we're given, right? So that the agreements that are made are made inside the reality of where we're at. And so that's kind of a hard comparison, because, I mean, we need more bodies. I mean, we see that in comparison to where we're at in other cities, so we are below that, that two police officers for every thousand residents. But we're doing everything we can, since I've took an office, to be able to get our team on the same page to find force multipliers, and y'all have supported that. But it doesn't replace bodies.
Right.
I mean, we see, the closest comparable would be Wichita Falls, and they're at 29 more police officers than us, and 37 more support staff than us, and about $6.5 million larger budget. Now, there's, we're not apples to apples, that's just our closest comparison. So when we see those things, to highlight those things, it's not to point fingers, or it's just, hey, this is the reality where we're at. And as these guys move forward, they'll operate inside the confines that they're given, to do the best they can with what options we have, and I think we saw that with this contract.
And I think you hit the nail on the head, and some people don't understand, you know, there's, you have X amount of money to deal with, and there's points in times where you have to retain your employees or try to replace them at a different rate. Some people don't see all the negotiations that go on behind the scenes, and we just need to understand, we would love to grow in all those elements and silos, sometimes we just have the budget we have, and we have to work within it. So I commend all of y'all for working down that path.
Yes, sir.
Just real quick to add to his statements, there are some provisions in here that definitely help with retention, to include that, you know, counting some of those paid leaves as our regular hours worked, and the sick leave payout structure, that's part of your packet as well. Typically, when somebody leaves within a civil service position, payouts for sick leave and vacation leave really are, they don't have to wait a certain amount of time or have, they do have caps, but they don't have to wait a certain amount of time. The provision in here actually assists with people being within their positions longer so that they can get higher payouts. So there are some things in here that assist with the retention piece and hopefully with the recruitment piece as well.
I would just like to add that this contract, just like, excuse me, last year's contract, we do improve on recruiting. There are some things that, specific to us, that we do better than I think most other agencies, and it's because of this contract, so.
I'll make a quick summary here, you know, we were glad to hear last week that this got approved. We came to an agreement, a consensus of what we thought would work for this year. It's always going to be something we're going to be working on to improve and expand, and that's not only with PD, that's with fire department, that's with all our employees. So number one, I just want to thank you for all that. Any further comments from the dais, it looks like? It looks like, or that?
Okay, I do need approval on that particular item.
Do we need to take these in two items, or just one?
Two, please.
Individually?
Yes. Yeah, if you'll do the agreement first, because once the agreement passes, then we'll know to do the budget ordinance.
Okay, so I'll look for a motion on item C, number one.
I make a motion, we approve the agreement with San Angelo Police Officers Coalition.
Second.
I have a first from Tommy and a second from Karen Hesse Smith. Karen Hesse Smith? No, we didn't call her Heather. I know that. I was thinking I didn't do it twice, and then Patrick threw that up. Okay. With that, I have a motion at first and a second. Do we have any public comment on item one? With that, all those in favor of item one say aye. Any opposed? Item one passes seven zero. We'll move into item two.
So the next item is just the budget amendment for this. With the approval of the agreement, we do have to update the budget amendment, and that's updating that 5% for the police pay scale. And the conversion of the two lieutenant positions to deputy chiefs.
I move approval, Mayor.
Second.
I've got a first from Tommy Hebert, a second from Harry Thomas. Any public comment on item two? With no public comment, I'll look for a vote. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? With no nays, item two passes seven zero. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Council.
Now we'll move into item D, second reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 2 Administration, Personnel, Article 2.07, Boards, Committees and Commissions, Division 1, Generally Section 2.07.001, Organizations and Procedure by Providing for Alternate Board Members, Providing for Severability, and Providing for an Effective Date Presentation Made by City Attorney Brandon Dice.
Thank you, Mayor. We had some good questions last time, and so wanted to bring this back on as a regular item to address those. One of the questions being, can an alternate under this new ordinance be appointed to a regular, full-time member? And talked through it at length with Heather, did some research, and don't find anything that prohibits that. So we do think that that can happen. But we did want to add a provision clarifying term limits. So I did add that the terms that served as an alternate would count towards the six years, essentially, if, you know, they get reappointed as a regular also. And then because an alternate can be appointed at any time, just for tracking purposes and to help Heather, we put a provision talking about when that initial term will expire. And so it'll be based on the earliest expiring term of any regular member that's then serving. So their initial term, unless they're appointed with a regular member, will be an unexpired term first, and then they'll go into their full term. So those are the revisions we made. Happy to answer any other questions on that.
Sure.
I'd just like to thank Brandon and Heather for the refinements on this ordinance. And I'm willing to make the motion to approve.
Hold on just a second. So Brad, I have some questions here about, we put this in place for when we lack quorum in certain boards, and we don't want to slow up as it moves forward. Walk me through the process. If we learn on a, and this is for Heather too, if we learn on a Monday that we're going to be two people short to make a quorum, how would we move forward? Who could we pick? Eligibility? How could we appoint? I mean, to me, there's questions while we have this in place. Let's talk about the execution of it.
Yeah. Well, I think you're appointing alternates for certain boards so we know which alternates go with which boards. And then the board liaison is responsible for calling, make sure they have quorum. And if they don't, then they're going to be calling those alternates saying, hey, we need you there. Alternates are always welcome to still go to the meetings, even if we do have quorum, so they know what's going on. It's just they wouldn't be voting unless there was a regular member absent.
Right. So would it suffice to say that we're going to need to create alternative members for every board and get those filled and assigned? Who would, so are we going to develop two alternates?
Planning commission is a big one because we have deadlines that are statutory. And if we miss those, they have pretty bad implications. So I'd definitely say planning commission. I don't know about every board. Maybe we'd want input from some directors and staff to see.
Well, I get that question. So let's take our primary boards and say, okay, so who's going to make those appointments? Is it going to be mayoral appointment?
The way we drafted it is, any member can appoint or nominate an alternate. But then they have to go through the same confirmation of the full council as a regular member, so.
We need to start that process. And Heather, I found some places where I had some errors where I didn't have some on ZBA and a couple. But I would like for you to go ahead and, let's go ahead and start and make sure we get those filled. Because it's painful as a council member and a mayor for somebody to call up and say, I've been sitting here 90 days because I've been waiting on you because one person was sick. And so I get that. So I want to commend you, right, for bringing this forward. Number two, don't let us sit on his heels. Feel free to push us a little bit, and let's get all these positions filled. And that goes to the board, too. If y'all can think of anybody, we'll look for Heather to kind of do a summary memo on what we need to place. And then we'll all put our heads together and go from there. So I'll look for a motion on D. Motion from Karen Hesse Smith, second from Mary Coffey. Any public comment on D? With no public comment, I'll take a vote. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Item D passes seven zero. With that, we'll move into closed session, executive session, under the provision of Government Code Title V, Open Government Ethics, Subtitle A, Open Government, Chapter 5.51, Open Meeting, Subchapter D. Exceptions to requirements that meetings be open under the following sections. A, Section 5.51.072, Deliberations About Real Property Regarding 505 South Chavern and 404 South Irving. We're going to go in closed session. We hope to return shortly. We're going to go in closed session, we hope to return shortly.